Call this meeting to order. It is 3 o'clock, June 25th, Wednesday, and this is our 3 o'clock study session. City Clerk, may we please have a roll?
And Mayor, if you could bring your microphone down just a little bit, please?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
It isn't that she didn't get desperate and send something on my desk that says, "Please speak into the microphone." Just saying.
Okay, roll call.
My mother wasn't this attentive.
Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Carnavale?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Gregory?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
Here. Do we have any changes to the study session agenda, please?
I have no changes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I can't even see your head, but I'm going to know your voices there. So, City Clerk, can you please read the statement of participation for any public comments?
Public comment is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are within the city council's jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or request that a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. If you are a member of the public and you wish to address the city council, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and submit it to the city clerk. You will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you have materials or other items to present to the members of the city council, please do not approach them. All materials shall be presented to the city clerk for distribution. And Mayor, we do have one request to speak. Mr. Robert McCormick?
Thank you. Good afternoon, both of you.
Good afternoon. I'm not going to formally address you guys. I'm not too happy with this body of authority. I'm not here on my behalf. My name is Robert McCormick. I'm a decorated United States Marine Corps veteran. Because I am homeless, days, weeks, months, years, kind of blend in together. But it did happen recently. I was at the senior center. I am a member. Here's my membership, and here's the two cards of the individuals that I will be addressing, as well as others. I was sitting in the lobby, as in Cathedral City Senior Center. They have different rooms of activities that go on, and if you're not in one of those activities, you're sitting in the lobby. I'm sitting there, a woman between 70 to 75 years old says, "You need to behave yourself. They do not want you here." I sat there for a long time, wondering, now, what am I going to do with this information? Forty-five minutes later, she comes back and says the same thing. "You need to behave yourself. They do not want you here." I told Jeff Corbin and Victor Ide, who the woman was, because she went in the back room, and what the situation was. They assured me that the issue would be addressed. This, like I said, it happened last year or the year before. It's been a long time. Earlier this year, though, I asked them what the status was. They said, "We took care of the problem." I said, "You took care of the problem? What did you do?" We took the woman's membership away from her. Seventy, 75 years old, that was probably her only meal that she got during the day, was meals on wheels. And because of harassment, intimidation, and threats against her, she's going to have to tell me that I need to behave myself. "They don't want you here." I told these gentlemen, she didn't say, "I do not want you here." She said, "They." I said, "Who are the 'they' that she was referring to?" "Oh, we don't care. We got rid of the problem." What I want is for her membership to be reinstated. I don't know what her name is. I don't know if she's made a complaint. Maybe she got too intimidated, harassed, and bullied to fear coming forward with a complaint that her membership was illegally taken away from her. I don't know. If she did come here, I am the one that she was referring to. I want her membership to be reinstated. I want her to be financially compensated for all of the crimes that were committed against her, not only from Victor Ide and Jeff Corbin, but whoever it is that told her to tell me. Because she had to have been intimidated and harassed and bullied in order to do that. She didn't do that on her own.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Here is my membership and the cards.
Thank you, sir.
What I would like to say is, take it out of the private sector, put it under the purview of the city. Desert Hot Springs Center, the purview of the city.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment? I see none, Mayor.
Thank you so very much. So, our number two item is interviewing applicants for Finance Advisory Committee, and Mr. Manager, Charlie McLendon, will provide instructions to the applicants. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I believe the applicants for the committee are here. And what we do is use a random number draw to determine who goes in which order. That way, it's fair for everybody. And right now, I have them in alphabetical order by last name. So, Antonio Beishu is number one, Rosio Conde is number two, and David Leach is number three. We'll run the sequence number and see what order they go in. And if this works right, 3-1-2. So, David Leach will go first, and Antonio will go second, and Rosio will go third. Okay? All right. So, I think we're ready to go, and if, David, you want to just approach the podium, they'll have a few questions for you, and it's pretty easy and painless.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm Dave Leach. How are you all doing today?
Well, thank you.
I don't know what they want as a remark from me to start with, but I was interested in when I saw this position posted.
So, we're going to ask you questions.
Sure.
So, just hold on a second.
Please.
Mayor's going to go first.
Please. I know. I'm asking if you would please go first, because I don't think that happens.
All right. Well, then, I will go first, and then the mayor can chime in next. So, you've applied for the Finance Advisory Committee, and it meets, it used to be once a year, but it's actually meeting about three or four times a year. It could meet any time that the council or staff feels that we need to run something by a Citizens Committee dealing with finances. Is that schedule work for you, and what would you do the rest of the year to kind of prep to be ready if we should call a meeting?
Oh, and I'm actually retired, so I do have quite a bit of time right now. So, meeting three, four times a year is fine. As far as what I would do to prepare, it's just obviously if I'm on the committee, I'm going to be able to see what's needed to be addressed at the next committee. I'm sure there's stuff to read and contemplate before you go into a meeting, and so I would take my time to do that and be prepared to go in and address each of the issues that need to be addressed.
All right. That sounds good. Thank you so much, and thank you so much for applying for this position.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your interest in the Finance Committee. Please tell the council a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the committee.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, I'm retired. I spent about 40 years in the financial services industry, various different companies throughout the years. I've lived mostly on the East Coast, moved out here to Cathedral City about four years ago. Started to learn a little bit more about the local town, the local politics. Always been interested in serving when I can, and now that I have the time to do that, I would like to bring my background in financial services to help out any way I can in the city.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Councilmember Gutierrez?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
One of the roles of the Finance Advisory Committee is to provide oversight on the uses of funds raised through city tax measures. Why do you think it is important to have such citizens oversight?
It's a little hard to hear it. It wasn't important to have a citizen...
Why do you think it is important to have citizens oversight?
I think it's important, because, you know, when you're not part of the politics, you're not part of what's going on, and you're just a normal citizen in the community, you hear things from your fellow citizens that may not be addressed directly to somebody that they know is part of the city politics. And someone who's a citizen advisor can bring those to people's attention and find out who needs to be told, and who needs to be educated, and who needs to possibly hear things they haven't heard before. Also, living in the community, you kind of see the day-to-day things that might be needed, and what some of the funds should be allocated for, and look at the priorities that are needed by everybody in the community.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lamb? Interviewing. Here, let me turn this on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Great. Thank you. What do you think are the most important revenue sources to the city?
Well, obviously, I would assume that there's some local taxes. I know there's the, is it the Measure L that generates the 3% utilities and things like that that generate income? I was reading something this morning that there's also some Measure W or Measure M or something like that that might come into effect, too. So, I know there's different ways to generate it. Another thing would be to, you know, learn more about it. I mean, it's something that I don't think, being just a person living in the city, I know a lot about, and it's something I would love to learn more about and figure out how, maybe to find new ways to generate income, and how to effectively use those that are already there.
And just for clarification, you said you had a background in financial services. What exactly, what was that?
Okay. Well, I worked for 30 years for a mutual fund company, and then I worked for the last 10, 11 years as an advisor for Merrill Lynch.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Carnavale?
Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Lamb, for asking that question. I was curious, too, on that. That was a very important part of the interview, so thank you. David, the city's challenges is that sometime we demand for services from the community often exceeds our ability to pay for such services. Do you have any suggestions you have for us that would meet a challenge to bring in more money?
Well, I think the first thing to meet the challenges along those lines is to figure out the priority of what's needed first, and then find the ways to use the money effectively that you have. Again, not being part of the council, not having been part of it going into it, I don't know all the different ways that the city can generate additional revenues. But I think the first thing you need to do is prioritize what is important to the community, and then find ways to pay for that first that work your way down the list.
Good. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I get to bring it home with thanking you for your participation in the interview and for your willingness to serve our city. Is there anything else you would like to share that we could consider for your application?
Well, I think the questions have been very good. They kind of opened it up to everything, you know, background, what I see, why I want to participate. But I think I'll bring it back and circle back, is that, you know, living here now for four years, it's something that I would love to try to put my expertise into helping out the city of Cathedral City.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you all for your questions. I appreciate your time.
But we're using, but I know, but they're the same. Number two is Antonio Beishu. Mr. Beishu?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mayor. We are approaching him and council members.
Thank you so much for coming and for your interest in the Finance Advisory Committee. Please tell the council a little about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the committee.
I'm the vice chair of the Parks and Community Events Commission, and I'm a 17-year resident of Cathedral City. What brought me here, particularly for this committee, is that I worked on the, on Measure W, and I don't think there's a resident in Cathedral City who worked harder, put in more volunteer hours to get that passed than myself. I worked on the PAC, and I also worked in giving speeches at all the 55 and older dated communities here in the city. I did it because it's vital to the city's future.
Thank you so very much.
All right. Thank you, Antonio, for being here and for applying for this position. So, it used to be this committee just meant about once a year, but lately, with the additional funding measures and other things that we've been using the committee for, they meet maybe three or four times a year. So, how would that schedule work with what else is going on in your life? And you've already mentioned you have some other volunteer opportunities with the city. And what would you be doing to prepare for those meetings in between, so that you were prepared about the city's finances, if should a meeting be called?
Plenty of time, if they decide to help out. I'm assuming we would get a packet or something to prepare for the meeting, but reviewing the new revenue streams from Measure W is what brings me here, and I'm really excited about the rollback for the ambulance on July 1st. And that's something that we promised people was going to happen. It is happening, and I'm very proud of that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you. Hello, Antonio. Good afternoon. One of the roles of the Finance Advisory Committee is to provide oversight on the use of funds raised through city tax measures. Why do you think it's important to have citizens oversight?
Well, just like what I just said, that...
And if you could just speak up a tad.
What we were doing during Measure W was, we were letting people know what the difference was between Measure W and Measure K, and why it was a better measure to vote for, because the burden wasn't on us. But we promised a lot of things. Police, fire, police, fire, roads, DRD, and, you know, community centers. So, you know, these are things that I would advocate on that committee for, to make sure that we hold ourselves to what we told people we were going to do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb? Thank you, and thank you for stepping up to the plate once again. What do you think are the most important revenue sources to the city?
Well, it is taxes. It's 76% of our budget. But there's, like, little things that we can do, like Chief Contreras, when he did the fire presentation here, he said that we weren't charging enough for the ambulance. We're charging less than what Medicare is paying for. So, little things like that. Getting those things together, the price that we charge for the ambulance, and what Medicare pays, because we were leaving money on the table, there's just going to be a lot of examples like that throughout the budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Carnavale, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Antonio. One of the city's challenges is that demand for services from the community often exceeds our ability to pay for such services. What are your suggestions do you have as to meet that challenge?
Well, fortunately, this bill, the measure, did pass, so that's an extra $5 million. But I do see that we are borrowing from our reserves for the next two years, so we really do have to watch our spending. But like I said, with what Chief Contreras had said, there's probably a lot of little things like that that just are common sense adjustments that people can make. In the commission that I'm on, I was able to get 150% of our annual budget in free services, and I'm only at the smallest amount of the budget by.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for participating in the interview and for your willingness to serve on our city's different commissions. Is there anything else you'd like to add as we consider your application?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, I'm going to get this wrong, and you're going to help me. Is it Ms. Conde?
Conde.
Conde. See, I should have asked him. Thank you, Ms. Conde. Thank you so much for your interest in the Finance Advisory Committee. Please tell the council a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the commission.
First, let me say thank you for giving me this opportunity to come to this interview. So, yes, my name is Rosio Conde. I am an educator. I've been participating, I think, for many years, about around 25 years, in public education, participating in different committees, like at the state level, in national level, representing teachers. I have been involved in school site councils, ELAC and DLEC, which are committees that are advisory to the Board of Education. So, I think that I have experience, and I can contribute to my city, participating in this committee.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro-Tim?
All right. Thank you, Rosio. So, good to see you, and thank you so much for applying. This committee used to be just a once-a-year committee, but lately, it's been more of a three- or four-times-a-year committee, as we have a number of tax measures that we ask the committee to oversee, and we could call on them for other things that deal with finance of the city, if we have issues that come up. So, how would that schedule work with your work and other volunteer schedule? And what would you do in between to prepare yourself, to be familiar with the city finances, if you should then get called to a committee meeting?
I think that when you're getting one of these committees, you need to research, right? Research in which state the city is financially. So, I have time. I will ask for the time to plan accordingly to the meetings. I have a job that I can work, you know, my schedule, and be available for those meetings.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gutierrez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Rosio.
Hola.
The role of the Finance Advisory Committee is to provide oversight on the funds raised through city measures. Why do you think it's important to have such citizens oversight?
We can accomplish more together than separated, and I think that civic engagement of our community is key for us to be successful in any action we take as a city. Especially, as a city council, I am grateful, and I appreciate that you're, you know, having these committees and getting both our people and the citizens of Cathedral.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lamb, please. Great. And thank you so much for your willingness to step up to the plate, Rosio. This is wonderful. And I wanted to, I'm a former educator, and ELAC is the English Language Advisory Council, and SSC is the School Site Council.
All right.
And the School Site Council, just for general knowledge, and in Rosio's background, is that it's a paraeducators, teachers, and parents group that oversees what's happening in the school.
And we oversee the budget.
Yeah, starting with the budget. So, thank you so much.
And how funds are allocated in the school.
Right. Right. Really. But it's a great opportunity to work with other people about budget matters concerning this deal. The question is, what do you think are the most important revenue sources to the city?
Property taxes, you know, is one domain, I will say, for the city. Grants from the state and federal grants, Measure W that just passed on November, right, the past election. Yeah, there are so many, you know, permits, everything that, you know, yard sales, there is a lot of money coming to our city. So, my concern is how we're going to deal in the future, you know, with these challenges in the budget, and about the state losses that we're going to have, you know, going to have in the future. But I'm pretty sure, having a diverse group of people working in the budget committee, we will be able to get everything, you know, stable.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Carnavale, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. One of the city's challenges is that demand for services from the community often exceeds our ability to pay for such services. What suggestions do you have for us to meet that challenge? Any new ideas?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure, I can. I'll do it a little bit slower. One of the city's challenges is that demand for services from the community often exceeds our ability to pay for services. What suggestions do you have for the city to meet that challenge?
Well, I think that we just passed, like I mentioned before, a measure. We have passed different measures in the past years, and it's something that we, as a committee, you know, as together, collaboration, we can brainstorm and, you know, bring ideas about how raise that funding for our city.
Good answer. Good answer. Thank you.
Yeah. And as you've heard me say, we're thanking you for participating in this interview. Truly, we are. And for your willingness to serve our city. Is there anything else you'd like to add that we should consider on your application?
Yes. That I want to participate a lot, that I am eager to start participating in my city, and that I am going to do my best to meet, you know, those challenges that sometimes we encounter when we are working in a committee like the budget committee, and I'm ready for that.
Thank you so very much for your time and for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's the final interview, Mayor. We do have an item on the agenda at the regular meeting this evening, which will allow you the opportunity to make an appointment from these interviews.
And time allotted for us to discuss, of course.
Yes, and time for you to discuss it then. Then would be the appropriate time to do that, yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, our next item.
Mayor Ross, I'd just like to ask for public comments. We do have one member of the public present. If you're a member of the public and you wish to comment on this item, please raise your hand, and I see none.
Thank you, then. And then, as was said, the appointment of the Financial Advisory Committee will take place during the regular portion of the meeting. Item B. Hello. Welcome, Mr. Beseril. Economic Development Update: Strategic Partnerships, Auto Industry Analysis, and Development Dashboard Tools. Mr. City Manager, do we have a staff report?
We do, and I'm going to introduce Eric Beseril, who is our Economic Development Manager. You know him, and I believe he's going to have some assistance today in the presentation from Victor Gomez of the Economic Development Department as well. Eric?
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim, and council. Excited today to show you all a couple of updates that we have here with economic development. And I just did want to note, Charlie, you always pronounce my name so well, and not many do, so...
How does he say it?
Beseril.
That's out of you.
He rolls the R's.
Beseril. All right. We're going to try. We're going to try even better, harder.
So, some of the things that we're going to talk about today are some of the advancements and shifts that we're having with economic development, as we look at ways to address some of the challenges that we see and we face in our industry. One of the first ones that I'll talk about, because, you know, who doesn't like free things, is a scholarship that we received from Team California. Team California being a regional agency that goes out and really advocates for businesses, both small and large scale, to come to California and incentivize that kind of development. So, in that scholarship, we did have a lot of really neat things, so I'll touch on that. I'll also talk about a SWOT analysis, so a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, that we are conducting with the automotive industry, as well as business support programs that we are working to get launched off the ground. And Victor will come up and touch on our development dashboard and some updates with So, first is Team California. So, when I took on this role, I wanted to kind of explore what collaborative agencies we've been working with historically, which ones we haven't, and also, you know, I definitely am a person that acknowledges the budgets and the constraints that public agencies have, and just being very cautious of how we go about in our expenditures. But with that, I had talked with Team California about what it would take to be part of that. I knew there was a value in being with them, seeing them at so many large trade conferences, such as ICSC and many others. They had a scholarship application open, and so I applied in behalf of the city, of course, with the support of Andy and Ann. But we ended up getting awarded this scholarship, which is a value of about $20,000. So, when you look at here on the chart, you can kind of see some of the benefits that we have. And I think just one of the biggest things to note is, economic development really is, it's a team of one and a half. So, Victor, as much as I don't want to share Victor, I share Victor with the city manager's office, which is actually a really good thing, because we work so well hand-in-hand. But with that, you know, we have to figure out ways to, how do we extend our services with our limited resources? And I think that's the most important thing we can do. We, as an organization, understand the value of being at some of these larger trade conferences, but we don't necessarily have to. but we don't necessarily have to attend them to show presence. And I think that's one of the most important things to note, is this partnership with Team California, we have an opportunity where at, at the, the trade conferences, we'll have all of our material. And these conversations of many interested businesses that want to come and develop in our community, those types of meetings will still occur. Not only that, but we have engaged with Visit Greater Palm Springs, as well as Riverside County Office of Economic Development. So basically, we have three different organizations out there rooting for us to, to really get more business and development in our community. So trying to be out there without really, you know, without, with being cautious of our expenditures. So there's a little bit about Team California. We as well will be getting many other things that have to do with branding and marketing, and we'll share those as they come forward. The next, I think you all just talked about it, the finances and sales and use tax being so crucial to, to our budget, you know, around 28% of our budget. And from the 28%, you know, you look about almost half of that or so comes from the automotive sales and the automotive industry. And so we, knowing that, being so important, when we look at economic development, business retention, expansion, and attraction, well, what are we doing to ensure that our businesses are staying with us and being successful? So in that, we engage, we actually monthly, we go to a monthly meeting with the Cathedral City Auto Center Group, which is a part, select group that represents a significant portion of the auto dealers. In the conversations with them, we got note that there were concerns from other cities and the investments that they were making, such as Indio and La Quinta, this, this group and many others. They're small groups and they talk amongst each other. So us knowing our position and trying to be the best at how we react to some of this commentary, we understand limitations with budgets, but we also have to do things in a very strategic manner, so that when we do respond to some of these concerns, we're doing it from a very strategic manner. We're not just going in and trying to identify a, a select amount of money to allocate for X, Y, or Z. I think it's crucial that we look at the overarching picture. What have we done? You guys have all have done so much, and the previous councils have done so much for that industry. We want to ensure that we continue to tell that story and we take note of that. But as we look to the future, what do we need to do to have that competitive edge? And that's the most important part of this analysis. So through that, we've already began that analysis in, of course, the fiscal year being kind of our indicator of when we kind of can start the second part of the SWOT analysis. But you will see a lot coming forward here in the coming months, but that is underway. Next up that we have is business support programs. So again, looking at how we do our expenditures and how do we move forward and sort of multiply ourselves in, in some form or fashion. Well, Victor and I can't be at every place and meet with every business, although we do, do the best that we can to, to meet those needs. We understand our limitations and we know that. So how do we go out there and how do we engage with our community? And how do we respond to them and listen to them? That's where we've reached out to additional partners here in the Coachella Valley and done this in a really fiscally responsible manner. Each of these organizations, when we spoke with them, we, we express our limitations on our budgets and what we're hoping to accomplish. And so one of the biggest parts to all of this is just accountability and ensuring that we, as, as an economic development team, that we're not only investing, but we're also seeing that return, and then we're telling you all what that return was. And so with that, each of these organizations will be compiling reports where they're showing us not only who they spoke with, but they're sharing, sharing with us any achievements such as acquiring financing, which is one of the parts that we don't necessarily stay in touch with them, although sometimes they do advise us when they do get a small business loan or something of that nature. But in this case, these organizations will be tracking that and for the rest of that time of that business. So, meaning we have a consistent dialogue with these businesses and they're not, not being unheard. So the Women's Business Center, they do not just focus on women-owned businesses, they support all businesses. And I've attended a number of their, their meetings and there, there is definitely a multitude of different individuals that, that are at these. And so what they'll be providing is in-person, one-on-one business counseling, which we thought was so important. After Victor and I went out to the business community and we saw that we had a Spanish-speaking community, we saw we had a very diverse community, and we saw we, we had a community that really, a business community that really had limitations on, and flexibility in their schedule. So they couldn't make it to all of our workshops, but they, they couldn't get away from that. So how do we work around their schedule is through this collaborative effort. And not only that, but I didn't even put it on the slide here, but DRD, during some of these workshops, the Desert Recreation District, which is another component to, that you all know about, we're gonna be having them help us take care of the children while their parents are doing the counseling and what's necessary for them to succeed in our community. So we thought that that was just as important, that as we look at how creative we can be, what are the needs? And when I went to several of these shops, I saw the little kids running around. That was apparent to me that, that there is a need there, that we need to also be, be cautious of, so that when we do these services, that we're, you know, we're understanding of their needs and we're also allowing them to really focus and their, their energy and time into listening to some of these workshops, so that they can actually grow in our community. The other is the Small Business Development Center and the Riverside County Office of Economic Development. Why are those so important? In, in the, in the way that business works, access to capital is critical. And when you go through these programs, you set yourself up to be qualifying for SBA loans and things of that nature, low-interest loans. And being in the world of business, we know how important 1%, 2% can be to a loan and really can maybe break the bank of a small business when we really look at the long-term impact of that. So what Riverside County knows is that we have a very diverse community with so many different needs. So what they have done is actually developed a program that is a year-long, a year-round program, where we're, we're gonna have multi-weeks, multiple weeks of certain topics. And this will allow us to go really deep with some of these businesses that are ready to either go to the next level, maybe get off the ground, depend on where they're at. So each workshop will cater to a variety of different business needs here in our community. And both of them being, of course, and I slightly mentioned it, but both of them being in, in Spanish as well. So as we go through this, we also know that not everybody follows social media, so how are we gonna get the word out? A lot of it is in-person. I really hope you all believe me that our community here, they admire when we go out there and we talk to them, they know the value of that. And so we're not gonna shy away from going out there. We're, we're used to this heat, so under this coat, it's a short-sleeved shirt, so don't worry. But, you know, to that point, it's like, we need to go out there, talk to them, engage with them. A lot of them maybe haven't necessarily had the time to come in here if it wasn't for a fine or maybe, or a fee that they needed to pay. So we want to have these communication efforts that are in a positive fashion, but in a constructive way as well. And here, Victor has spent so much time on this project, and over the last several months, I've really had a great time working with him. But this is a project he has really steered and I commend him for his efforts, so I'll really let him share, share his efforts with that. And at the end, you all can ask me questions on, on mine or Victor's slides as well.
Good afternoon, Victor. How are you?
Doing great, about yourself, Mayor?
Very well, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council and staff. So my name is Victor Gomez and I'm the Administrative Analyst for Economic Development and the City Manager's Office. So the Development Dashboard is a GIS-based platform that allows both citizens and internal staff, commissioners, to view the larger-scale projects that are going on in the city, as well as being able to view their status. And so I'll give you a, a brief demonstration. But while I pull that up, I'd like to reiterate that the Development Dashboard is a very, it's a result of a very manual process. The Development Dashboard does not pull from our internal systems, but it is generated through the collaboration of staff. Without planning's help, without buildings' help, engineering, fire, essentially every department that touches a larger-scale project, this dashboard came through fruition, it came to fruition through the combined efforts, as well as through our talented GIS analyst, Alex Marginsky. So once you visit the dashboard site, you see your smiling faces up here. And once you scroll down, you're able to view a map of the other projects that are going on in the city. Now, this isn't a new technology, I guess you would say. Other municipalities in the Coachella Valley do have a software like this, but I will say that this one shines above the rest, if I, if I do say so myself. So if you look, you can see all the larger-scale projects that are going on in the city, from commercial to mixed-use to residential. And you're able to click on a project, so let's say we want to know more about what's going on with Forest Lawn. We can click on details. The software will zoom in, it'll show an aerial map with a overlay of the parcel where the project is going to take place. So again, this map is a multipurpose tool, I guess you could say. It's for the common resident who wants to know what's going on down the street, it's for internal staff to have access to current projects, and it's for commissioners and developers to be able to have current know about what's going on in the city. So for Forest Lawn, if you look, you can see the project description, gives a brief description of what's going on, its category, and then it'll also tell you the status of the project. So whether the project is under review, approved, under construction, or completed, the project status will have a brief description of what each of those means. So for this project, it is under review, meaning it has not yet completed the entitlement process. And if we scroll down, each project's site plan is also attached. And this is more so for our developers who wish to see what's going on at the project. And if anyone would like information on it, they can always contact our staff. And you can also have some filters here. So let's say you're a common resident looking to know what housing developments are coming to the city. You can go up here to the filter aspect of it, activate the residential portion, and let's just look at what's currently under construction, for example. Once we do this, we can see all of the projects that are currently under construction. So we have Canyon Springs Villas, Cathedral Canyon Apartments, Vesta at Ascena. And so it's a very, for lack of a better word, nifty tool that you can use to see what's going on in the city. And the way that we keep this fresh, relevant, and up-to-date is through our Development Services Committee meeting. So bi-weekly or every month, we will review this collectively, every department, representatives from every department, to keep projects, I guess you would say, at the forefront of our minds. So no longer are larger-scale projects slipping through the cracks. This also helps us keep on track when projects are going to be expired. And again, it's, it's just a culmination of the collaborative effort that staff is putting forward at this time. And so you can access it by going to our Cathedral City Economic Development page on our city website. But I'd encourage you to come in, look at all the projects, and it's nice to get a whole look at the forest and, and see what all our efforts are going to. So with that, that is the end of my presentation, and Eric and I are available for any questions.
How do you access this website, again?
So the easiest way to access, once you get there, personally, I bookmark it, but all you have to do is go to our city website. And we are going through a website update too, so this process might change, but once it does, we'll be sure to provide updated instructions. So if you go to Departments, you'll hover over Community and Economic Development. And you'll go over here to the left-hand side for Economic Development tab. And if you scroll down, it is the very first item. So you can either click on the hyperlink or you can click on the picture. And once you're there, I know it's, it takes a bit to get there from our website, but you can always just favorite it and add it to your bookmarks, and that way you can access it. And again, the most important thing is that we keep this information fresh, relevant, which it is.
Great. Thank you.
That's very cool.
And I'm here if you have any additional questions.
Yes. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation, Victor. That's very good. I'm not gonna ask about the website, because that looks good. I'll have to play with it for a while and then I might have some questions, but it looks, it looks as a good way, sometimes we even see the names of projects, I know, in our updates, and I have to say, where is that project? So I'm sure I'll probably bookmark that and be looking it up. You spoke about Team California, this is the first I, I've heard about this, but, so you mentioned that we have a $20,000 scholarship. When, what period does that cover? I assume that's a membership scholarship?
It is, it is. So it is a year-long membership? Let me see. There we go. And so if you look at the, the list that we have here on the screen and the membership levels, we're on the far-right column under Platinum.
Right.
And if you look at the Platinum, this includes a, a variety of things. So basic membership, meaning that we're participating in their bi-weekly meetings, the business card or iDocument at trade events, that's, that's amazing. That, that, what that means is that they basically have a list of every hot city, and they say, hey, here's Beverly Hills, and here's all these other cities. I just picked Beverly Hills. But nonetheless, they have a list of cities that contribute these kinds of investments. And I think it's, it's the right thing, that if we can be next to a lot of these cities that, that we see and we admire how, how well they're doing, this is what's gonna help us. So the, the business cards or the iDocuments at trade shows, that's part of this. And as you scroll down, you see that, that a lot of it has to do with marketing. That's what they're doing, that they're really pushing, come to California.
So what, what period of time does the scholarship cover?
Okay, so it, it goes, I believe it's, is it the end of this, please? So it's still Ju-, so it'd be June 2026.
Oh, so it's just something that's just started?
It just started.
Oh, okay, yeah. Because if it had already started sometime past, I was gonna ask you, are you seeing returns? But I, I, I would guess that that's what this year will give you. You'll be able to see whether it's something you want to continue.
Well, you know, and to that point, one, one of the things that, that we recently went through was talking to a site selector of, of a national brand, large brand. And some of the information that they were asking, we actually hooked them up with Team California. And just the fact that they were able to engage and, you know, we didn't actually end up going through and being one of the areas, we were one of various areas they were looking at, but we were one of the only ones in California they were looking at. So I think that that, you know, just that alone, that experience, I think, really showed dividends in, in the fact that we had someone that knows these individuals, knows these site selectors by a first-name basis, and really has a, a pretty good grasp as to what they're looking for.
Right. And when you say they, you have the opportunity to participate at events, what does that mean? Do they have conferences or what do they have?
So what they'll do is, so like a good example is ICSC. So ICSC Western is coming up soon to, back to Palm Springs. And there, we'll have, we'll actually have our presentation at their Team California booth. So, and we'll also have access to, if, if we need to host a, a meeting with a client or a prospective client, we can actually host it at their, their sort of.
Okay, so they don't necessarily, all of these are their own events, some of them, they're, they're participating in these other big events, but we're actually, we're actually have the ability. I think many of us have been to ICSC, it's been a while, but I know what you're saying. Some of them had big sections where they had meeting rooms or, you know, those types of things or displays. So Team California is one of those ones that comes and does those, a big area, and, and being, as being a member, then we're able to display and meet there? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes. And luckily, we have, we have access to that booth, and so we, you know, that's, it's better for someone else to, to pay for that than us, and I think that's a good thing.
And set it up and tear it down, that's right. All right. This is probably a really obvious question, but the Coachella Valley Women's Business Center, I don't think it was really said, is it only, or is it, is it centered towards women's businesses, or is it open to all different types of businesses?
So it is open to all types of businesses. It actually operates in the Entrepreneurship Resource Center, and this is a funded organization through Cal State San Bernardino. So, so they do not only cater to women-owned businesses, they cater to any business. And that was one of my overarching questions, as, as I first even heard of, of the organization a, a while ago. And I got to quickly see that that's not, that, that's just how they had started out, but they've since branched and done so much more.
Yeah, we certainly want to support women-owned businesses, but we have needs in all types of businesses, so I'm glad to hear that, so.
Yes, yes.
And you'll be making sure that any, any people that look at our, or you speak about this resource, that they're aware, that it's not just.
Yes, and I think that our, that's, I think part of our marketing efforts is, are gonna be just that, is, is really taking the time, because I've learned real quick that just handing a business owner a flyer isn't, isn't enough. It really is taking the time to explain. And so part of that will be in clear, there's not just women-owned businesses.
All right. Well, I, I think this looks like a, a really good combination. I know your goals are to. I know your goals are to attract and grow and retain businesses here in Cathedral City. And it seems like that with this, at least to me, that this variety of programs that you're looking at or getting us involved with really goes to those three purposes. So thank you so much for the work you're doing in this area.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Lam?
Great presentation and great work for both of you. My one question was, when I talked about the Coachella Valley Women Business Center delivery format, it says in-person for the work. So where do they go? Do they go to Cal State San Bernardino or do they go here?
No, so the counseling, we're going to host here.
Oh, okay.
And we actually talked to them. So we're going to host it at the study session. Because we feel like if we can, what if it's a one-stop shop? What if they're ready to get a business license? What if they're ready to ask those next questions? We want to be available. And we thought it'd be nice to have them here. We have a beautiful city hall, let's bring them to the downtown. Now with that, we did entertain and we have, we're still working to see what we can do. And I'm kind of eyeballing Trilusa and some other areas that have a sort of an enclosed space that's maybe a little bit more private for, maybe there's some proprietary, if they have a business that they don't want anyone to really know about or information they don't really want to share at that time. So we are working on ways too that we might host some of these in small businesses within the community. But as of right now, our main area will be the study session room there on the first floor.
Okay, great. I was going, I was hoping that was going to be your answer. Because when I had a chance to come to your small business workshop that was just here in City Hall, it was so relaxed and informal. And there was a point where, you know, you invited anybody who wants to speak about their business, you know, to give their elevator pitch and talk about whatever and what their needs were. And it was like the line was forming and everybody was, so that energy is there. So I really appreciate that.
I am so glad that you saw that energy. Because those entrepreneurs, they need this, right? They're putting their effort in and going and putting their, you know, their finances on the line and we need to support them.
It was fun. Thank you.
Thank you so much. An exciting presentation, looking forward to it. I want to share a rather anecdotal story. Because when you talk about this, you talk about different businesses. And I've owned a business, you tend to get into a bubble. This is what I do for a business and this is where I get my product. And this is how I sell it and this is where I bank. And you just kind of stay there. I was invited to attend, and I won't say which one, one of our dealerships. They had these weekly meetings and for a month they asked me to come to the meetings. On the fourth meeting, super progressive group, really top-notch, right? They said, we're so excited for you to hear our new pitch, our new television or radio, I can't remember. And it went something like this, here in the Coachella Valley if you want. And I think I must have had like headlight eyes and they said, what's wrong? I said, do you have any women who shop here? Because I'm telling you, that's not going to get them, right? And they just, it was just like, it was just like an epiphany for them at that very moment. They just didn't know what they didn't know. Bright people, well-financed, really, you know, one of our great assets in our city. And they just didn't know that little thing. And so that's something that I see this as being, all those nuggets that maybe you missed when you were gold mining, you know, that you can now bring in and become wealthy as a result. So I really am economically wealthy, you know, not just medley wealthy. But anyway, I really appreciate all that you've done on this and I think this is a great asset to our city. I can't wait to go play with it.
Thank you.
And now, now he has a question.
I do have a question. Now, the community website, development website, how often is that updated?
So we're actually undergoing a big update. And so what you see right now, even what is right now, that's completely going to be changing. But we update that quite a bit. So the development dashboard, we meet, if not weekly, it's a bi-weekly meeting. And we're constantly in communication with every department. Everyone being on the same floor really helps us be able to gather all that data. But we have a meeting where it's called the Development Services Committee, which I believe is a one-of-a-kind meeting. I've been in government for some time and it's kind of hard to get everybody in one room and everybody kind of speak from one voice. But that's exactly what that is and kind of transformational when you think about how development looks. But at the end of that meeting, Victor's plugged in permanently on our itinerary to update the dashboard. So we go through every single one of the projects. And it's actually a good time for us to say, oh, were there changes to this? Or something else will come up. And so it's a good exercise for us, but we update it consistently. So you'll likely see an update from that, you know, at least monthly. But it's typically done on a weekly basis.
Well, thank you. I'll be also working on it and going through it.
Yes, have fun with it. It's a very neat device.
Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Glasses are not in my hand. Yeah, I just needed my glasses back on. Do we have any public comment on this issue, please?
Mayor, I did not receive any requests to speak forums. But if you're a member of the public and you wish to comment, please join us at the podium.
Mr. Lee, welcome.
How did you know it was me? Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. We had the privilege of seeing Eric's presentation at our previous Planning Commission meeting. And after that, I was able to take that link away. And as you probably know, most of you know, I try and do a lot of communication within the city through social media, through email. I posted links to that in Nextdoor and various Facebook groups. And I was overwhelmed with the number of people that actually read something that I was posting. So I got lots of excited comments about that website. GIS is the best possible way of visualizing information to the public. And one of the things that I've always wanted to do is see the city communicate better with the public. We don't get them at meetings, so we have to find ways to outreach. And this is a wonderful tool. And I think it's best summed up by someone who asked me a question yesterday. I sent them to that link and their response was, wow, this is slick.
That's what we want to be. Thank you. Thank you so very much. So this was for presentation only. Are there any other members who would like to speak, members of the public or?
I see none, Mayor.
All right, thank you so very much. So item number C is a review of our Historic Preservation Committee. And staff recommends city council review and discuss the intent and purpose of Historic Preservation Committee and provide direction to city staff at HPC. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Andy Feierstein, our Community and Economic Development Director, will present this item. And he is the staff liaison, him and his staff, to the Historic Preservation Commission. And they recently worked on a work plan for the upcoming year. And the purpose of this is for you all to review their work plan and kind of make sure we're all on the same page in terms of the direction that they're heading. Andy?
What's not to like about that? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Andy Feierstein. And difficult presentation to follow up, but there's links between all the presentations that you've heard. Eric's presentation really was about putting your resources to work and what economic development is doing for you today. And in a similar way, this is about the Historic Preservation Committee and what your volunteers and the Historic Preservation Committee members are doing for you. So the purpose of this presentation is really to get direction from city council on the intent and purpose that you see for the Historic Preservation Committee, to ensure that the work that they are programming in their annual work plan is aligned with council's interests. There is a little bit of division with the Historic Preservation Committee, and I'll get into that in this presentation. This really is a product of our success, getting full Historic Preservation Committee. We now have five members of the Historic Preservation Committee. And with the new members, there are new ideas and there may be some different directions that they would like to go. In staff's view and hearing the opinions from the Historic Preservation Committee, we really see two options. One is to simply make recommendations on applications for historic designation only. This really would be hearing applications like they did for the Agnes Pelton-Homan Studio that was designated as a historic site in the city. The second option is to do that, but as well, to take on activities that work to promote and raise awareness of historic preservation and the city's history. So a broader role for the Historic Preservation Committee. We step back and look at how we got here. The Historic Preservation Committee was formed by city council through the adoption of ordinance number 821 in 2019. And this ordinance has established the powers and duties of the Historic Preservation Committee, and that is to review projects for compliance with applicable provisions of the code related to the preservation of historic resources. And this also includes making recommendations to the city council and planning commission related to the approval of projects involving historic resources and the adoption of regulations aimed at preserving historic resources. The Historic Preservation Committee conducted five meetings over the period of three years, leading to the development of the Historic Preservation Ordinance that was adopted by city council in November of 2022. Since the adoption of the ordinance in November 2022, the Historic Preservation Committee met four times in 2023 to develop a historic preservation application and another three times to review and consider an application for the historic designation of the Agnes Pelton-Homan Studio that was recommended for designation in October 2023 and was subsequently adopted by city council.
May I just ask you a question? Why did that take three meetings to make that decision?
I think there was a need for additional information on the application and from the applicant supporting the request. So that did take a couple of meetings to work through. But the Historic Preservation Committee persevered, working with staff, working with the applicant, and brought that forward successfully.
So just curious, when you have an application, and this doesn't have to do with historic, this is probably just about anything. If the person has a need and they fill out an application, well, then the buck's kind of on them, right? I mean, you just keep going back and back and back to them saying, you know, help yourself, help yourself get this done?
So staff operates to facilitate that, whether it's on historic preservation or any other application. We want to realize success. We want to help an applicant be successful. So we are working with them closely to show them the way, to offer comments and suggestions and corrections. This was a challenging application. I would say that it probably is atypical for a historic preservation application.
Thank you.
So continuing with the meeting history, after the October 2023 meeting, the next four meetings of the Historic Preservation Committee were canceled. After the February 2024 meeting was canceled, several members of the Historic Preservation Committee requested to resume meeting to discuss the ordinance and the application form. The Historic Preservation Committee met four times then to review and discuss the ordinance and the application form. The application form was divided into two forms, one for the designation of a property as well as a certificate of appropriateness. And a certificate of appropriateness is when you're making an alteration to a historic resource to ensure that that permit, if you're doing remodel, that it's consistent with the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So there's one form for the designation of a property and a certificate of appropriateness. And then there's a separate form for the removal or downgrade of a historic designation. So those forms were split and finalized in July 2024. July 2024, staff also covered the Mills Act Tax Abatement Program and presented information on historic districts to the committee. The committee did not meet again until February 2025, and that was a combination of a lack of members as well as the inability to establish a quorum. When they resumed meeting in February 2025, the Historic Preservation Committee conducted a recap of their 2024 meetings and introduced the concept of an annual work plan. This was introduced to help the committee identify and prioritize their work. After that, the March and April meetings were canceled due to a lack of a quorum, although we did hear from Historic Preservation Committee members on some of their ideas, both at the February meeting as well as through emails after that. So a draft work plan was provided to the Historic Preservation Committee for their May 2025 meeting based on input received from HPC. And that was adopted by the committee at their May meeting. So in the work plan are all of the ideas that are shown on this slide. Right now, the code really is geared towards structures. But they are interested in potentially looking at expanding this to include districts. They are interested in taking on work documenting oral history within Cathedral City, within the community. They're looking at possibly a lower level of recognition for properties that may not meet the strict criteria for historic preservation. But how can we recognize or acknowledge the significance of properties that may not meet that high threshold for historic preservation? They are interested in conducting additional outreach and communication with the public to raise awareness of historic preservation. They're looking at walking tours, how to commemorate and document some of the history through walking tours. We have the 100th anniversary of the first subdivision coming up here in August. So they're looking at how we can memorialize and celebrate the 100th anniversary of the first subdivision within our community and potentially also updating the application form again. So all of this is in the Historic Preservation Committee work plan that was adopted by the committee in May, although subsequent to its adoption, discussion came up and that's where we started to see some differences of opinion on the work of the Historic Preservation Committee and really what has led staff to come to council today. So going back to the opening of the presentation. So the difference of opinion on the Historic Preservation Committee, there is an opinion that advocates that the role of the Historic Preservation Committee is simply to review applications and to make recommendations on whether a project is historic or not. That's the narrow point of view. The others articulated a lot of the ideas that were on that previous slide, the broader work plan. There is an eagerness, there's a strong desire from those committee members to do more than just review applications. And it's expressed through the work plan that they have adopted. So getting back to the role of the Historic Preservation Committee. On this first option, the Historic Preservation Committee has supported the development of a historic preservation ordinance between 2020 and 2022. They've conducted eight meetings in 2023 and 2024 to review the application form, leading to the development of the two application forms that we have today in July 2024. With the implementation of EnerGov and the Citizen Self-Service Portal in 2024, all applications for historic preservation are processed through EnerGov, making the prior application forms obsolete. The forms in CSS follow what was developed by the Historic Preservation Committee and the Historic Preservation Ordinance. So if the purpose of the Historic Preservation Committee is just to review applications, then the committee should revert to an ad hoc meeting schedule and not take on additional responsibilities through their annual work plan. There is broader support for the Historic Preservation Committee though, including intent statements in the original ordinance, in ordinance number 821, that express the desire to encourage public knowledge, understanding, and appreciation of the city's past, to strengthen the economy of the city by protecting and enhancing the city's attractions to residents, tourists, and visitors, and to promote the private and public use of historical areas and sites for the education, prosperity, and general welfare of the people. Chapter eight of the municipal code, which contains your historic preservation regulations, also makes reference to education as a purpose of the historic preservation regulations. So in staff's opinion, there is strong support. And you do have an eager membership within the Historic Preservation Committee to take on these additional tasks and challenges. So with that, I'm looking for council's direction on the intent and purpose and where you see the Historic Preservation Committee going and what work they can do for you.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions?
Well, I don't...
All the way, buddy, all the way down. Then we're going to come back this way.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like the idea of reaching, going out of the bounds and stepping out of the box and looking for more. But can you explain to me, what makes it historic? Is it years, accomplishments? Is it, you know, structure? Because I have a couple of things in my head, but it might only be not historical. You know what I'm saying? How long does it have to be that we could start acknowledging some historic events or persons, places, things?
Sure. So, great question, and there's many answers to that. I would say that 50 years is the threshold in terms of time. And then beyond that, significance can mean many, many things. And this is at a local, at a state, and at a national level. At a local level, it can mean really anything that we want it to mean. What is significant to us? What is significant to this community? What is significant in Cathedral City? The way that the code is established today, there's various tiers, various classifications for historic sites. You have the possibility of having sites that have significance due to the design or the architect or the persons that were involved. So designation of the Agnes Pelton-Homan Studio, for instance, the structure itself, it's old. It's not necessarily designed by a significant architect, but it's a Class I historic site because of the significance to the artist community and the artist that resided there and made that her studio for a period of time, Agnes Pelton. So it can mean many different things.
Okay. Because I think that's really exciting because, you know, Cathedral City being relatively a new city, we're not like Los Angeles or San Francisco, something like that. But there's a lot of great people. How did Cathedral City become what it is today? A lot of... How did Cathedral City become what it is today, on a lot of people's backs? Sarah DeGrande, for instance, was our first female mayor pro tem back in the days. You know, I mean, these people should be recognized historically, and it should be brought to the attention of our community, what got us today. So, that's why I was concerned about what boundaries are we within, is it only structures or people? So, I'm glad to see we're really reaching out for the historic and history of Cathedral City and above, so thank you, Annie, appreciate it.
May I just follow up on that? But when you talk about historic preservation, we're not trying to preserve elderly people in our community, right? I mean, there has to be something, something different for that.
I'm talking about knowledge, I would assume, bringing it out, I mean.
But, but this particularly is preservation, so you're right, preservation of documents?
So, going back to the Agnes Pelton-Homan Studio, it was the property, it was the site that that was designated, and it was in recognition of Agnes Pelton's significance to the artist community and to Cathedral City. So, that designation itself was still tied to a structure. Now, there are ways to recognize things other than a structure. Right now, our code is geared more towards structures than it is to districts, but that could change, and there's even ways, and I think that's what is being expressed in the work plan, even if it is not through historic designation of a site. There are still ways to celebrate our history, there's still ways to recognize our past.
Okay, all right. My mind was misunderstood, because I saw events on there, you know, so that kind of event, how do you do a historic event here in Cathedral City if it hasn't been, you know, if we've only been here a certain amount of years? So, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for your presentation. Now, can you tell me how many applications have been submitted for approval for the Historic Preservation Committee?
One.
One?
One.
Okay. How many are on the pipeline?
None.
Okay, so only one has been approved?
Yes.
Okay. Now, just like Councilmember Carnavale said, we're a relatively new city. A lot of the historic buildings have been torn down, that were torn down 10, 15 years ago, that could have been historic to our city. I don't see much of a prevalence in the Historic Preservation Committee. I've never been a fan of it because of the fact that we're a relatively new city, and the buildings are nowhere, there's very few properties that are actually, could be considered historic, especially since it's up to the owner to actually opt in to make it historic. So, with that being said, I believe that Historic Preservation Committee was, its role was intended to approve and review applications, not to educate and to make people aware of properties that are historic or could be historic or anything about it. So, I believe that we should continue with the same role, have the Historic Preservation Committee approve and accept applications, but to make the education and awareness optional. That is a great idea, but I don't think that should be their role. I think that should be just, just something that they can consider if time allows them to do so, but I think that should be an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Well, so interesting, because, you know, this Historic Preservation Committee idea or concept and maybe some of the work had existed before I came on council, but there was a lot of discussion, of course, what, as you laid out, most of those things have happened since 2018, so I remember a lot of the discussion. And although we are a relatively new city, it doesn't mean we don't have history, both history before the city was formed and even history since the city was formed. So, as, as Councilmember Carnavale pointed out, we, you know, we've had things happen, we had a first female vice mayor. Do you know there's a, there's a plaque commemorating her on a bus stop, unless it's been torn down, over near, on Date Palm, over near the fire station, there's a bus stop there, and Sunline, because apparently she served on Sunline, they commemorated her with the plaque and dedicated that bus stop to her. Why is that not recorded, and why doesn't everybody, at least in the city portion, the people that care, know about that? Well, the problem is because we don't have anybody doing that work. So, I know a lot of the discussion, and what I thought was the intent of the Historic Preservation Committee was to deal with this, with sites first, because that's what was in front of us. So, we were dealing with requests for the Agnes Pelton House and perhaps others, but at that time, that was the only one that's known, and it sounds like that's still the other, only one that's known. But I believed that when the commission got through that and got all the applications and all that done, then there would be, as long as there were willing participants on the commission, that we would be documenting and recording history, and that work would continue. There was some concern, you know, we would have to weigh staff time and costs, but if we had volunteers that were willing to do the work, I thought that that was going to be something that the committee was going to develop. So, I'm glad you brought this forward, because by the strict interpretation of the ordinance, it sounds like they're only, when an application comes up, then they, they review it and go on. I, I was under the impression that they certainly were going to make a push to educate property owners, they were going to even go out and identify some that possibly could have some historic significance, they were going to educate the owners. I know the council was very sensitive, and I am also very sensitive to anybody forcing a property owner to do something or doing some, so I guess, I think some of these things we look at, I even cringe a little bit when you talk about establishing districts. What is, what does that mean, you know? It would be one thing if they do some research and say, hey, this area was, has some historic because of people or sites or, you know, some combination thereof, something that happened there. So, we're going to, anything there, they would do, would need to come to the council, they would come to the council and say, we want to call this district Acatio Square, you know, something like that, you know? But, you know, call it something. I think that would be one thing that would be up for debate, and, and, you know, that could either happen or not. I think some squeamishness comes from the council if, if we say, well, they do that, and then the next step is to say, now we want restrictions on what can be done in that district. Now, you can't, you need to get a special permit to, to make a facade improvement, or you need, you know, some type of extra work. I think the council was very conscious of, we aren't anywhere near that, and we don't even want to touch that type of a thing. So, I think that is one issue here. You had a list, if you don't, if you can find and put it up, of some of the things, and that was one of them, process for dis, oral histories, again, I mean, I mean, there used to be a historical society, I don't know the status of it, I know it was, but I, I think that that was something that, in fact, I think it's been brought up at council goals before, is to start preserving the history, photographs, oral histories, documents, those types of things. So, I always thought, once the, once the Historic Preservation Commission got past this first hump of, of looking at the sites and establishing what they would do for site applications that came, that that would be something that then would come up about, well, as long as they had active members and volunteers that were going to do the majority of the work and not burden the city on staff time and cost without coming forward on that, that they would be moving forward. So, when I look at this list, there's many things on there. I think if the commission wants to do and has the energy and the time and the volunteers to do them, I was under the impression that we weren't going to say, nope, 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 you're only limited to the, to what's put down here on paper. As long as we aren't running into an area where we're involuntarily imposing restrictions on property owners, now that doesn't mean we might not educate them, they might identify a site, do a little bit of the history if they're willing to do it, and then meet with the property owner and, or, and say, hey, you know, this, this happened here, what would you like to do? Would you like to, you might want to just put a plaque yourself, or you might want to do nothing, you might say, well, this is just for my quiet enjoyment and either my resident or business, and I don't want to really get involved with that. Wouldn't stop us from, from writing it down somewhere, but I think the council has always been a little bit squeamish then about, then trying to come and take some council action or something, putting restrictions on. So, I don't want to see us go there, but as far as actually doing the, just recording the history and then sharing that with the property owner, I think that's the kind of thing that we had hoped would happen, but we wanted to leave it up to the property owners.
And I want to address that, and to be very clear, that that has not changed. And right now, there is no language in the code that would support the creation of a historic district. They're not looking to involuntarily impose districts, but really to create the opportunity even for the, the recognition or the designation of a historic district, so.
So, it sounds like they're wanting to do is research, and they're wanting to record, and they're wanting to save this history or before it goes away, the oral histories, of course, there'll be people that are, that have some knowledge, some of them here on council, that, you know, maybe know about things that happened in the city, that if, you know, if they move away or, or, or the inevitable happens, we don't want to talk about, you know, that, that is, that is completely lost, and I think that is, if we have people that are willing to do that work, I, I think that that was discussed and part of the intent originally, and I think we ought to allow that to move forward. In fact, we had encouraged that to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I totally agree with the idea of encouraging them to expand and elevate and educate tourists and alike about the resources that we already have in Cathedral City. And I, I, the list that they want to do, I think that is absolutely brilliant. For instance, when I just came on council, I had just heard about Ophelia Bringus, and I had been on the Arts Commission eight years before that and had been working on the Cathedral Canyon Bridge, but I didn't know who Ophelia Bringus was. So, just that, you know, that was so wonderful for me to hear about, that this woman had started the Boys and Girls Club and her contributions to the city, and it was just wonderful. We've got murals all along Chuparosa Lane that highlight, you know, anyway, there are lots of resources in the city that kind of the locals know about, that, you know, can be celebrated, and there isn't a place, there isn't a commission that really does this except for this particular committee, because the Public Arts Commission, they have their specifics that they're working on, and the parks and community events, there's no way that this happens. So, the historic, this is, this is the place that happens. I know there's an historical society, Margie St. Anthony, she was very involved in that and instrumental in that, and they housed all the displays about the early history of Cathedral City at the Museum of Ancient Wonders for a long time. So, there are lots of people that are great resources, but I, you know, I was, I was just thinking, I, I had an opportunity to visit the Crea Estate, and this was maybe a year or two ago, but I had never been in there, it's right next to La Paloma, and there is no parking, so you have to Uber your way in and lots of things. But anyway, I went in there, and what a beautiful, I mean, beautiful site, and it's been here for ages, and it's really a treasure in Cathedral City. And I found out that the two-story blue building right here in this, on Cathedral Canyon Highway 111 on the, the southwest corner, was the original site of Palm Springs Life Publishing, you know, so, you know, just, just a lot of things that could be elevated. So, if this committee, like Mayor Pro Tem Gregory was saying, you know, if they're interested in pursuing this and interviewing people and having oral histories and having presentations at the library, talking about Cathedral City's history, I'm all for it. That's a long way of saying yes.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
So, I am, I am also in support of many of these ideas. Many years ago, well, not really many, the older I get, the shorter many seems, but maybe four or five years ago, I remember bringing to, I think it was actually, it was actually goal-setting, and talked about, Margie had told me about somebody, Roger, or, I don't know, he had boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes of pictures of old-time Cathedral City, and it sat in his garage while he grew older and older. Where it is today, I can't tell you, because we didn't pursue it. It might still be available, we can investigate that and see, but those are the kinds of things that you take pictures of the pictures so that you can really save them kind of forever. I mean, maybe something as, as simple as somewhere in City Hall, you have a, a television that just runs those pictures over and over and over, and as people come by, they just get a glimpse of this, or next time they see that, and it reminds them of the history of our city. I believe losing your history is really tragic, and that we, we should do all we can not do. Now, how far does that go? I don't know about oral histories, I mean, I can imagine what that would be, I don't really know them. I think recognizing in a walking tour would be great, I think having your anniversary party would be great, I think, I don't know about public outreach and communications unless that fits back in with, you know, oral histories or updating things, I'm, I'm not really sure how that fits in. But the idea of keeping what assets we have and then having the commission also available if somebody wants to designate their home and it meets their requirements for historic, that can just sit on hold, but it, waiting for somebody to come to us, we don't need to go get them. But these other things, we should go get those, we should go get that walking tour and that anniversary and those pictures, because we aren't, nobody's just going to bring that to us and say, hey, we were going to do a walking tour for you for the rest of your lives. So, that would, that would be my, my spiel, that I would like us to, to do what we have to do that nobody else would, and then support those who, who want to do other things as well. Thank you.
Mayor, from that direction, that, in the information that I got from our city manager, was that they needed direction as to whether we want the commissioners to have the role of simply approving applications or to, to actually expand and adding what council is talking about right now, if we want to make that a requirement for commissioners to also do.
Well, I don't know about a requirement, but what I heard tonight was that the folks that come and look at possible assets as, as homes or businesses, it's very minimal. I mean, they met five times, you know, and, and nobody ever came forward.
Everyone, you was included, I'm sure. Crazy in trying to get anything done in local government, in a commission, in a committee, is that it's agendized, and because it's agendized, it comes under Brown, and therefore, the people that are involved in that discussion can't talk about it any other place, and that actually defeats the purpose of a lot of volunteer committees. So, I would say you're better off staying with the basic principle for the city government side of things, approving the applications, but then finding a way to sponsor an independent historical society of Cathedral City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, this is for presentation only, there is no formal action required, and we will now be recessing into closed sessions. City Attorney, will you please read the closed session items?
I'd be happy to do that. Mayor, you have three primary items on your closed session agenda. The first is a public employee appointment consideration with regard to the positions of interim city manager, city manager. The second is a conference with labor negotiator. Your labor negotiators are Charles McLendon and Al Ford of my office, and Eugenia Torres. Your third item is a conference with legal counsel to consider initiation of legal litigation with regard to the property listed on the agenda. If there's any public comment on these items, you could take it at this time, if not you.